It is, Linda, that's okay too because we're, we're recording now. Thank you. Okay, Monday, February 8th, the Board of Ed Work Session Meeting at 7:00 PM. I would ask you all to stand for the Pledge to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So we're going to begin with our committee reports. Is there, I'm sure we do have several committees that would like to report on. Larry, do you want to just give us a brief update of where you're at with your committees?
The... Sure, make me go first.
I'm sorry, policy, policy.
Give me, give me a second.
Okay, we'll go back to you. Brendan, I'm sorry, Brendan, you want to give us an update?
Yeah, so I'll, I guess I'll update quickly on, on two things. One, just to, to thank everybody for their involvement in the Communication Committees Forum last week. I think it went very well. We will be, I got some, some ideas, feedback from people for what the next committee or next forum should be. So I'll be reaching out to the, my committee members this week to schedule another meeting just internally. So we can talk about, you know, what the, the next step on that should be. I'll get Terry involved in that as well. And just a, a quick, I know, I guess this committee update is probably the best part to give an update on. As the Board's Legislative Liaison, I attended the NISBA Capital Conference this past week and then advocated on behalf of the district with Senator Scoofus. And that went very well. We, we had a, a delegation from different Orange County school boards. Our priorities were, I'm sure Harvey will give a much more in-depth view of what the budget proposal means for our district, but I can tell you what we advocated for. More money for, obviously, as we move forward, you know, like just to give you a little background, the, the budget, the current estimates are based on a $6 billion assumption from the federal government, but currently Senator Schumer's proposal contains $15 billion. So one of it, that was one of the, our focuses was that ensuring that if we do get that additional $9 billion that schools will not be cut out of that, you know, that, that will have money, extra money put in to make up for the, the big disparities that have developed over the past 11 months. You know, possible use for summer programs if, if needed. And also, I, we, we lobbied hard to ensure that, you know, we, schools get the funding that we need to get back into school five days a week safely. Certainly by, you know, we were all, everyone was in agreement that there's, there's no way we can come back in the fall and, and not have the funding that we need if we are still, you know, obligated for six feet in masks. And there just needs to be extra help from the state for us to, again, get that extra space or get the equipment that we need. So Senator Scoofus was very receptive to this and, you know, promised to advocate then in turn on our behalf. And then we meet again with Assemblyman Schmidt this Thursday for a similar meeting. So that's the, the roundabout from the Capitol Conference.
Thank you, Brendan. Larry, you want to jump back to you? Is that okay?
Yeah, sure. The Policy Committee meeting scheduled for March 3rd has been moved to March 10th. On March 3rd, Orange County School Boards is having a, a meeting which will include our new regents for our area.
Oh, nice.
So we moved it and I would suggest anybody who wants to attend that, you'll be able to. It's, it's a Zoom meeting and they might find it interesting. So that would be kind of cool. The... Okay, now I can't even read my own handwriting. The Facilities Committee will be meeting tomorrow. Terry, I see you changed the, want to change the date on, time on that? Not the whole committee, it's just...
Yeah, we're just, we're just meeting to figure out a good time for everyone to be able to meet, so.
Okay, alright, so yeah, either 8:30 or 11 is fine with me. So just let me know which one. So I'll, I'll be meeting with Terry and Harvey tomorrow to figure out what our next steps are because we still have not gotten the hard copies from the architect.
Okay, alright. Thank you, Larry. Anyone else have a, have a committee update at this point?
Nancy, I don't have a committee update, but I have an add-on to, with Larry. Larry, an email came through today with verbiage on adding a policy. I don't know, I'm sure, I'm sure you got it.
I had a, a strange day with emails. My phone wasn't getting them. And I just finally sat down at the computer and that's how I know Terry just sent me something.
So I'll, I'll forward it to you. If you have any, if you, if you miss it over the next day or so.
Yeah, I thought I, I thought I forwarded it as, I thought I forwarded it as well, but yeah, let us know, Larry, if you didn't get it.
Okay.
Okay.
And Nancy?
Yes?
So Audit Committee, quick update. Just to clarify, I think there was a, an invite for this coming Wednesday, the 10th. We are not going to meet on the 10th. I think our plan was to meet in March. We're still going to meet in March. I just heard that the 3rd of March is open. And presuming everyone had already allocated time, I think the Audit Committee will meet. Aren't any objections from any members?
Okay, thank you, John.
Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Alright, Terry, Superintendent's update, please.
Alright, good evening, everyone. Just two updates for today. First, everyone should have received communication from Megan and our entire team. We're really excited about our second semester hybrid model, which takes effect for our high school students and staff on March 1st and our middle school students and staff on March 15th. So this, as everyone knows, we've been in first semester hybrid model for everyone has really included two days of in-person instruction and three days of remote lessons with recorded lessons being provided to students. With this new phase, which is new to Cornwall but not new to the state of New York, is having our students engage in five days of live instruction from our Rockstar staff. So students will still be coming in in person on their assigned days. We still believe that in-person instruction is the end-all, be-all and what we should all be aiming for. On their days where they were previously remote for recorded lessons, they are now going to get a period-by-period livestream into our middle school and, and high school. So lots of other details provided by Megan, but just wanted to bring it up for the board, just to see if there's any questions because we're really excited to move forward as, again, as everyone knows, the reason why we didn't begin the year with this model is just we had too many concerns and unanswered questions with our technology infrastructure. So we've tested, tweaked, piloted all semester long and now we can confidently move forward with this plan. So look for new information coming out in the coming weeks, but Megan's communication was really comprehensive of what students and staff and parents should expect with the second semester model.
Okay. Terry, anything?
Nancy, hold on.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
Megan, could you put a tracer on that? I never received that, that correspondence. I got it from Debbie because, you know, we were parents, just like you all. And so I got it through the back channel, but I didn't get it through the board channel.
Yeah, we, I get a report of all school messengers, so I can see what happened, but everyone on the Board of Ed, it's a subgroup.
No, I'm just letting you know, I'm looking at my emails right now.
Yeah.
I did not receive it. So put a tracer on that.
No problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions before I go into my second topic? Alright, so second, it's, it's late, but it's never too late to celebrate our amazing staff. Last week was School Counselor Appreciation Week. So it's just a great time to recognize our counselors, but also our, our social workers, our nurses, any staff who really are the frontline. And this is teachers, you name it. There's so many people involved, but front and center are counselors and social workers who, since this pandemic began, their world has, and priorities have shifted significantly. So when we talk about social emotional supports for students and others, that has changed from what a typical year might look like. So when you think of supports for students during a pandemic, we're talking about providing backpacks, food, devices, making sure that they're being connected to medical resources and the like. It's not something that we trumpet and celebrate because these are hard conversations that our, our staff are having with families and, and, and our kiddos. So I want to make sure that as we talk about improvements that we could make, that we don't miss the fact that some of our staff have worked tirelessly to provide non-stop support for our students and, and families in this pandemic. So our counselors, I appreciate you, social workers, nurses, teachers, everyone who plays a part in making sure our students feel welcomed and supported in our schools. If they're remote, making sure they're connected to our buildings and resources beyond. But I didn't want too far, too much time to pass without celebrating our counselors for School Counselor Appreciation Week, but also so many others who play a significant part in supporting our students in, in this pandemic.
Thank you, Terry. Okay, next we're up to public comments. Oh, go ahead, Larry.
Okay, I got that email and we have to adopt this policy by the 23rd of March. Since the Policy Committee is meeting on the 10th, we'll have that ready for the, our next board meeting.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Okay, so we're up to recognition of visitors, public comments. All public comments were asked to be sent to me prior to 5:00 PM this evening. And just a reminder, there's, we don't dialogue back and forth, so I am reading the public comments. We do have one from the last meeting that for some reason I never received. I let Maureen Spalding know that and apologize for that, so I assured her that I would read it at this meeting. All comments that, public comments that we receive, just so that everyone knows who's watching, they do, the board does receive a copy of all of them. Good afternoon, I have a few questions. Has the district's bandwidth issue been corrected? And if so, when will students begin receiving live instruction daily? If not, what is the district's plan to correct this? Many districts, including those in Long Island, have returned to classes five days a week in person. While I appreciate Cornwall's attempted hybrid, it is not going well, especially for students with IUPs. My student really needs the classroom interaction to be engaged. When will the district be able to offer this? What can be done to get the middle school students out for recess daily? Thank you, Maureen Spalding. This is from Mike Haggerty. Good morning. I would ask that this be read out loud at the meeting for all participants and members here. I wanted to write a quick email in support of the upcoming vote for the winter sports programs. I, I agree all sports should continue, but specifically basketball. These kids have gone through so much of the past year to deprive them of another year of a sports interruption would be terrible. I think all parents would agree they would like their child to participate in the sports programs. I for one would sign any waiver needed to make this happen. I would also give up my right to be a spectator just to allow them to play. I would also agree to let them wear masks. Most of these travel programs are going on now as well and it is working out good for them. Please vote yes for any and all sports to start ASAP. Thank you again, Mike Haggerty. This is from Cara Cavallo. I write to urge the Board of Education to allow sports to go forward in Cornwall, including wrestling. The pandemic has had a substantial impact on our children's lives with increased isolation, disruption to their schedules and a complete loss of some things, some of the things that matter most to them, including sports. Allowing them to practice together as a team and compete will help alleviate the severe impact from what they have lost. There is only one chance to participate in high school sports. Sports offer experiences that will shape these students, athletes, into the people they will become and provide memories that will last them a lifetime. I therefore implore the Board of Education to permit school sports to go forward, including wrestling. Thank you for your time and consideration. Best regards, Cara Cavallo. And from Brittany Boyardi, I am writing to request that the district staff cease referring to asynchronous remote lessons as previously recorded lessons. This phrasing implies that students are receiving actual recorded instruction equivalent to the live instruction on asynchronous days. This is not universally true across the district. Lesson delivery varies from class to class and classes on asynchronous days not necessarily include recordings. Please be careful with the words you choose because they are used in making important decisions regarding the instruction and support provided to your students. And that concludes our public comments for this evening. Can we now move on? Under the, one item tonight on the consent agenda, and that is personnel actions. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda item as submitted by the Superintendent of Schools, item number two. Do I have a motion?
John, move it.
And second? Margaret, second? Is there any discussion on this since there's only one item? Okay, all those in favor? Louis? Larry? Teresa? Brendan? John?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Nina? And myself, aye, motion carried. Thank you. We then go on to new business non-consent items, resolution on high-risk sports. Whereas on January 22nd, 2021, the Governor and the New York State Health Department authorized schools to operate certain high-risk sports effective February 1st, 2021, as may be permitted and authorized by local county health departments. And I will take the next four whereas as per document. It is therefore resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education and Cornwall Central School District hereby approves the following, implement the following interscholastic sports for the 2020-21 seasons. Winter basketball, boys and girls varsity, junior varsity, modified wrestling, varsity, junior varsity, modified competitive cheer, varsity and junior varsity, fall to football, varsity JV, freshman volleyball, varsity JV and modified. And all practices and contests will occur in accordance with all guidelines issued by New York State, the county and the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, Section League, as such guidelines may be amended at any time. The Board delegates to and authorizes the superintendent to take any action he deems necessary and appropriate, that such, to ensure that such sports are implemented in a safe manner consistent with all guidelines. New York State, County and Section, this includes the authority to temporarily suspend district participation in any of the above sports if the superintendent deems such action necessary. Do I, and a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a, an observation.
Go ahead, Larry, go ahead.
One, I'm in favor of this. I just want that to be upfront. My, I have two concerns and a question. One is that I think that there is a lot that's going to be sitting on the individual players to make sure they adhere to the procedures that are outlined. I think that's, that's, if we want this to work, they have to take on the responsibility that, that this form that they're signing, that is, it's real. My biggest concern of this whole thing is other districts. I'm confident with our district. I know what we're doing. I know that we are doing the best that we can and, and we have been very successful. I'm concerned as we go to visit other school districts that they may not be as, either stringent or, or, you know, follow up as, as well as we do. And, you know, that's just a concern, just, just to put it out there. And my other, my other question is, Section 9, did I read somewhere that they said that there will be no spectators?
I think they said... I think that is the decision right now. I'm not sure or if it was for how long, but I think right now it's no spectators.
Okay, I just, just so that that's out in the open. Okay, thank you.
Margaret, did you have a question?
I did. I think in the paperwork that I read just today too, they were saying two spectators per player was just, I don't know if that's been updated since, but the information that was from, I don't know if it was Department of Health or, I don't remember, but anyway. I, I was a four-sport, a four-season, not four-season, four-year varsity athlete in high school. I played in college and I played afterward on competitive leagues as well. So sports are, are huge for me. My concern is that, and in doing the numbers, we have with the false, with the winter sports that are suggested, we have about, around about 200 athletes. Of the 1,600 eligible students that we have, that's 12.5% of students who could possibly play, who, who are on those sports teams. My concern and kind of along the lines of what Larry said is, again, I think Cornwall does a great job. I'm not 100% sure that our students going to other districts that might not have the same ability or the same level in place that, let's say, one of our athletes, you know, contracts COVID from, from one of the away games. Now they come back to school and now they've put the other 72% of the students at risk. It's my feeling that we have to pay attention to the well-being of all three, or 1,600 students, 3,000 students in entirety, but 1,600 who are eligible to play sports. And, you know, that, in the reports that we read, there were a couple of things that were in the report from the CD, or from the Orange County Department of Health. And one of them was a study from the American Medical Association talking, that the study concluded that even though high school athletics are highly valued by many students and parents, indoor practice, competition and social gatherings could jeopardize the safe operation of in-person instruction. So reading that kind of stuff, and then she also cited the, the study by the colleges, when the colleges went back in the spring, that resulted in campus closings, remote learning and increased community transmissions. There was also a report of the outbreak resulting from a wrestling tournament, which, you know, also impacted the communities as well. I did a lot of, I, I talked districts in Section 9 as well to kind of see if there are other options. When we were, when I was reading about the different high-impact or high-risk winter sports, you know, everybody's saying, okay, it tends to wear a mask and, and all that. But yet for wrestling and competitive cheer, the athletes cannot wear masks because they are choking hazards or, you know, hazards. So, you know, a cheer, cheerperson gets thrown into the air and the mask can come up and choke them or whatever and the wrestling two, they can get entangled. And especially with wrestling, you know, if you're that close in somebody's face and you're not wearing a mask, that the risk of transmission, I think, is just astronomical and that's concerning to me. And, and the fact that one of the, the forms that the students and the parents have to sign is a hold house and liability, that means that this is a big deal. You know, that, that the students are agreeing, the parents, the families are agreeing not to, you know, hold the, the district liable should anybody have any COVID issues or anybody, God forbid, pass from COVID because of the transmission that might occur in these sports. So again, and, and I also understand that it's a shortened season as it is. So it's only going to be about a three-week season for these kids, which is, you know, again, that's a couple, that's what I think a season of like eight, eight or something games. While the seven-day rule has been waived, so they can play on Sundays for the winter season and also the spring season, I believe. It, it just seems like it's a lot, it's a lot of extra risk for a very little return, especially when it comes to all of our students. And we want to make sure that all of our students do get the in-person education that they're, they're here for and that's what we're, we're making sure that that happens. You know, if, if, if one of the players or a couple of players contract COVID, now they bring it into the school, but then also they might have to cancel games because they won't have enough players because they're in quarantine or they're in isolation. So I'm wondering whether we propose doing something kind of like what Monroe Woodbury is doing. Monroe Woodbury is not participating in the Section 9 winter sports. Instead, they're doing an intramural program, kind of like an after-school situation where the students in the same cohort can play pickup games, you know. So they're already in the same cohort, so kind of in the same family grouping. You probably get more students who would actually participate in it just because they're not playing varsity sports in high school. They, they might have played basketball, you know, youth basketball and the like. And, you know, you could get pickup games there, so that's promoting the exercise and the social emotional connection without exposing everybody to any kind of external factors. I have, as you can tell, I have a whole list, but, and the fact that even the students who don't play the sports are not going to be able to even watch or cheer on their teammates, which I think would have been a great thing for the spirit and the social emotional development of everybody, but that's not going to be able to happen either. Again, if these sports were all held outside in the spring, it would be another story. But we're inside, it's, you know, it's crazy season, germs are crazy. It's just, I don't know, to me, it just doesn't seem like it's worth the risk for a shortened season like this to put all the students and the non-athletic, athletic student, non-athlete students at that kind of risk. So that's my...
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Teresa, go.
Hi, I totally agree with Margaret in as much as I'd love, I've been very, very concerned and I've said this many times, with the social emotional health of our children and their safety and this need for them to be out and participating and socializing with friends. On the other hand, I'm, I, my confidence level in other school districts is not as, as high as ours, as what we've been doing. I'm not knocking any school district. I just, I don't know. And we've been so careful that, I did read about MW, there was another school district as well. I'm not sure which one, but a pretty big school district that chose to do the same.
It was Newburgh, Teresa.
It was Newburgh, okay. And I would much prefer to see something done within the district itself, intramural, because I also think it could be much more cohesive. You would have more students being able to watch, participate. The whole idea, I don't think at this point is, I, I think, winning. And, and that type of thing is the utmost in our mind. I think getting children engaged and getting them a, a feeling of normalcy. I definitely want to see these kids start. I'd like to see every child participating in some type of sports and interaction. But I'm, I'm, I'm not comfortable, I don't know if the principals and the superintendents and all of the people in all these, in the sports departments, the coaches have also discussed this as being all on the same page. There's also different areas of our county that have higher incidence and it affects the particular school. So I, I also, I don't, I'd like to see this move forward, no doubt about it, but I was, I was looking and thinking more about an intramural as a way to do that as well.
I have a point about intramural, I just don't want to get too far away. And again, you all have my recommendations, so I'm not lobbying either way. All that I ask with intramurals is we have to consider size of district. So when you talk about MW and Newburgh, very large districts that have more options for fielding intramural teams and our size might preclude that. So just want to make note of kind of the size of district in that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Nancy?
Go ahead, John.
So, so I think Margaret and Teresa...
So, so I think Margaret and Teresa bring up some very important aspects of this. This is an exercise in risk management in my perspective. I understand that the athletic directors have sat down, the superintendents have sat down. They have worked out the various protocols to be followed. If in fact, you were to arrive at a place and people were not wearing masks. And obviously danger would be a big fear. And there's an ability to, to basically just cancel the match at that point based on a unsafe condition. I don't think that has ever been part of this equation where we want to put anyone in an unsafe condition. It does put additional responsibility on the coaches though, to make sure that they do ensure that the conditions are safe at all times for the, the athletes. So, and I understand that, that Terry and his staff have looked at it and they provided a recommendation to the board. My question. We're focused here on high risk sports. But they're also low and moderate risk sports that have been identified, I think. Are we proceeding with those sports and we're just focused on high risk because of the, the high risk nature posed? So could you just clarify that, Terry?
Yes, it's all of the sports are proceeding as scheduled according to the section nine rules and dates scheduled. These sports got picked out because the governor held those back until January 22nd, where he approves them to proceed.
Right, okay, great. So thanks for clarifying that. So, so we're actually going to have athletes engaged in sporting events with other districts. Those sporting events have been, and so the, the risk of contagion exists for those sports, just as it exists for these high risk sports, albeit obviously a little different, right? Especially with the masks and the like, but I think it's important to note that these notions of intermurals would be affecting only those in the high risk sports as opposed to all the athletes.
Okay, thank you, John.
Nancy, I, I'd add that, that I, I personally, I mean, I'm for these sports moving forward. I think it's critical for the senior athletes to get exposure to this. I think it's critical for those senior athletes that have a college path, perhaps a college, you know, you know, athletics in their future, that, that, that exposure occurs. I believe personally that Cornwall has led the way and plowed the way and proven to everybody around us that we can operate in this high tension environment, this, this higher, higher risk environment with being, from the onset, being in school and, and allowing our children in school and managing it appropriately. Certainly we had a handful of pivots, bumps along the way, but I believe that Cornwall can do it. Piggyback a little bit on what John said and that our, 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 our directors and our coaches are, are trained here. They, they have the professionalism and the leadership to say if they go into an environment with our children, our kiddos here, use Terry's term, that they have that ability to say, you know what, this is not for us today. This, this is not right here. We're going to respectfully decline today's event and we're going to move on and, and keep our kids safe. But at the same time, certainly offering I, I, I hesitate to say the word, a little bit of normalcy, a little, a little taste of what we used to know. So those are my thoughts to share with the group.
Thank you.
I have just a, a couple of questions, Nancy. And Terry, I guess you, you, you'd be the, the best person to direct these to. So the first thing that comes to mind and, and forgive me if it has been addressed and I just glossed over it, but what, what's the policy going to be on locker rooms? Because it seems to me, you know, the, the actual competition is probably the less likely when compared to the locker rooms of the, you know, the close in-person contact. You know, if you're going to contract it, that would be probably where it would happen. So if you could just give me the, you know, what, what's the status on that?
So currently we're we've engaged in workouts and off-season engagements with all sports. Some did not participate and we made a rule that locker room usage is not permitted for Brendan's very noticing. So we would have that same possibility with moving forward with, with these sports. Like John said, it's not just high risk sports that we need to use locker rooms. So we've been paying close attention to asking students, athletes to come prepared, already dressed, ready to go in and get it done and then hop into the car, use some Febreeze and get on, get on home. So locker room usage would be highly discouraged. I think we would have some instances where you know, we're not going to put a kiddo out in, in the cold if, if if there's ways that we can get students in, just so we use our bathrooms and limited capacity, we could do that as well.
Got it. Okay, very good. And another question, so there's the, I guess the release form, we'll call it, and it outlines the you know, it, it relates the adherence to the COVID protocols to the code of conduct. I, I would be interested in add, I mean, not, not not right now, you know, live on the call, but adding a little bit of teeth or at least some specifics to the, the students. I'm just curious, you know, I, I think that it, it's very important, obviously, that the students adhere to these, these protocols and you know, in, in the NBA, for instance, they have, not that we're going to compare ourselves to sport, professional sports leagues, but there are clearly defined suspensions and expected ramifications for even being caught, you know, at, at a party, let's say. So I, I'm just curious, will we get that specific with the, the consequences and, and what, what we mean by I, I'm going to try to quote the exact. You know, if I fail to comply with a legitimate school directive, obviously for a legal document, that's, that's fine, but I'm just curious, will that get translated more specifically for students? Here's what you can't do and here's what happens if you do it.
Yeah, I could certainly have that conversation with our athletic director and our coaches. Just, you know, I remember this being if we would catch a student athlete at a party, there were different consequences because you're part, you're part of a team, you signed an honor code and that, that could result in loss of games and, and the like. So I would expect the same here, though I don't have it delineated of what that exact, exactly would mean, but for me, it's, it's about most seriousness, like Margaret was saying. Because we're not, we're not talking about gesture teammates, we're talking about a whole high school or a whole middle school could be impacted by someone's actions. That said, we're dealing with that every day in Cornwall. There's travel teams that are playing every single day of the week and they're coming into our schools. There's social gatherings out in the community coming into our school. So we're dealing with that every day, but like Brendan said, there is, once you sign that document, and we have this in non-COVID years. When you're a student athlete, there's certain things that you commit to, especially to your teammates, but also as serving as a model for peers that we would expect to hold true with this code of conduct as well.
And Terry, just, and Brendan, I think to sort of answer what, what you were, that whole train of thought there. This code of conduct specifically was written by the Orange County Health Department. And they are requiring schools and their athletes to comply with that specific piece. That was the county health department's requirement.
Got it. Okay, and my, my last question, I know, so Terry, we, you have said this and I, I've said it myself and I think we all agree, you know, that we, we've kind of set a standard for ourself with you know, it's not just going to be sports, we'll, we'll bring back, yeah, exactly. Everything's got to come back, you know, in order for this to be, to be fair, to be equitable. And I, I understand, you know, the timing of it doesn't, it doesn't have to be like, you know, turning the keys at, at once to, to unlock the door. I totally get that. But if you can just talk for a, a second about what the district's progress is on other non-sport activities, particularly the arts, drama, things like that.
So the plan after tonight's meeting is to work with our principals, our admin teams and our sponsors of all clubs and extracurriculars to discuss feasibility of in-person clubs and extracurriculars moving, moving forward. So just like we're moving forward with the second semester hybrid model at the high school and middle school, now's the time to revisit some of our restrictions for clubs and extracurriculars. So that would go out this week, just as, you know, get this conversation started. Just like individual sports had to submit plans, individual clubs and extracurriculars would have to submit plans for, if you were to hold in person, how are you going to still adhere to social distancing has not changed for clubs and extracurriculars. Governor Cuomo wasn't on a podium talking about high-risk sports and clubs and extracurriculars. Unfortunately, you know, he just talked about high-risk sports. So that would be the plan is that, you know, we would move it pretty quickly. But it's still, again, going back to what Margaret said, we can't move forward so quickly that we put our in-person instruction at risk. So the conversation would start this week and I would, I would anticipate some pretty quick movement depending on how sponsors were able to get those plans together.
Got it. Great, thank you.
Nancy, I have one. Just one question. I just wanted to confirm in the resolution, are those all of the high-risk sports that we have? Are, are they all being approved to restart or are there any that weren't?
I believe there's one remaining. Thank you for reminding me. So we wanted to move forward with winter and fall too, because winter ends at the end of February and then we'll, we'll be right into March, falls two seasons. So I didn't want the board to have to revisit this again that quickly. I believe there's one high-risk sport for spring. I just can't recall which one it is.
Lacrosse.
Voice lacrosse. So that would be the final one that we would vote on at a later, at a later date, but we have a little bit for that.
I guess just to, to trail on that, can we get, as this goes forward, can the board get some reporting at a future meeting on how it's going or, you know, any incidents that are occurring around it that we should be, you know, looking at or concerning ourselves with?
Absolutely, and that's why I like the language in the the Orange County Department of Health states that, you know, if this board or the superintendent sees anything amiss, we can pivot out without a vote. This is a, we're noticing this concern. We're, we're in the X, any, any sport that's, that's moving forward.
I would follow up with that, just to, to second that suggestion from Nina. I think that's a, a, a great suggestion, makes me more comfortable with it, knowing that this isn't, this is something that is, I mean, to what Margaret so eloquently described before, you know, this is a really serious matter and, and it's not, it's not a one-off vote. I don't look at it, it's, this is the board serving its truest role in, in oversight and it's something that I think that we, you know, as a community, as a board should keep an eye on for the rest. So, you know, any regular reporting from now on would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, and I just want to just also say that I am so excited that this is coming to us this evening and I I fully endorse this and I, I think we will do well with it, the way we've been doing well with everything else. So thank you all. Okay. Sorry.
Thing. You had mentioned that this was the Board of Health's guidelines that, but there's nothing saying we can't make it more. I don't know if the word is strict, but more strict and incorporate something like Brendan was saying about having possible repercussions. If an athlete does go to a party. You know, these, these are not easy things for them to adhere to and it's going to be, it's going to be difficult. You know, we, we also have, you know, in our code of conduct for athletes, if they even attend a party where they're drinking, they can be suspended. So this is the similar kind of thing that they're going to have to adhere to. So they're, they're just, you know, going with what Brendan had mentioned, maybe there's something we can put into the the sign sheets.
Okay, thank you. We're going to do a roll call vote. Lewis?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
Brendan? John? Margaret? Nina? Nina? And myself, aye. Thank you. Motion carried. Number two, winter coaches' resolution for high-risk sports. Whereas the superintendent of schools recommends that the following coaches be appointed for high-risk sports for the 2021 winter season. I will take your rest per document. Now therefore be resolved that upon the superintendent's recommendation, the board does hereby approve the above-named coaches as recommended. Do I have a motion?
Mm.
Second.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a question. Did I just jump on somebody? I'm sorry. The stipend for the winter season, the stipend is going to be less? Because there's less with it, instead of the 12 weeks, it's just going to be like a three-week season?
So we're going to be engaging in that conversation. It's tricky because, as you know, we started workouts with our student athletes months ago. So this is an abnormal situation where I think we have to kind of work with where our coaches have been kind of going above and beyond with out-of-season workouts, keeping our kids engaged. I think, when did I approve that? October 12th, I think, or, or somewhere thereabouts. So this is a bit atypical, but we'll, we'll come back to what, what the definitive mark. The other thing of, of note for the board is every season has been pretty much truncated. So we have to think through that as well. So it's nothing that the coaches necessarily chose to do. It was, you know, section nine and others really trying to make sure that all of our seasons could, could proceed, but we are in conversations about that. That's a really good question. I just want to make sure that the board remembers that the vast majority of our coaches have been engaged with our athletes since October and beyond to keep them engaged and excited about their sports.
Okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor, I'm going to do a roll call. Lewis? Larry? Teresa?
Aye.
Brendan? John? Margaret?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you. Motion carried. Okay, so now we're up to presentations. First one will be Mr. Joe DeBol, Director of Guidance, to give a class rank presentation. Thank you for being with us tonight, Joe.
Thank you guys for having me. I'm really excited. Again, it's just, it's been a, a, a long journey with this kind of initiative. And you know, I know briefly we were talking about SEL and this is kind of SEL on a macro level. So what I want to do is to just want to kind of briefly show everybody where we have come from, where we've been recently, because I know there was a, a request for an update with this. Kind of a rollout plan, and then I just want to have a little time at the end for questions. So just bear with me here, I'm just going to share my screen. Okay, and just let me know if you guys can see a slideshow.
All good.
Good, all right, perfect. Okay, so this class rank policy that, you know, in terms of examining it, in terms of making steps to improve and change it is what I'm going to go over first. We're going to talk about the kind of rollout plan and then also the website. Again, I think it's just the, it serves as a great purpose and a great reference for people to have their frequently asked questions answered. And then we'll just have some time at the end for some questions. So again, just an overview of the timeline, in April of 2019, this is when the conversation kind of first came about regarding class rank and examining the policy to district office. Again, we kind of saw a trend of, you know, crowding at the top and realizing, is that damaging or is that helping our students? In the fall of 2019, we started researching, collecting data from college admissions reps from public and private realms, held informal pulse checks held informal pulse checks and conversations with various stakeholders. March of 2020, uh, we collected data from CCHS teachers. And then COVID happened. So immediately after that, so kind of put a little standstill on our steam there. But in May of 2020, uh, at a board presentation similar to this, I had much longer hair in that video. But we proposed a re-examination of class rank policy to the Board of Education with our student reps. And then the asterisk, the last item there is the October, November of 2020, our class rank committee was formed and we created our new policy. So the committee members, and the reason why I want to highlight the committee members is because everybody had a unique lens that they brought to the table. We had Mr. Dade, Ms. Argenio. Um, we had Mr. Trombetta, who is our interim principal for the first half of the year, myself. We had Ms. Quinn as one of the Board of Education members and we have Ms. Parnes, who is the co-chairperson for High School Student Services. She, she was able to provide a lot of institutional memory and knowledge, um, you know, because she has a lot of the traditions and knowledge of the place. So it's great to have that perspective. Um, we had Mr. Hines, who's a math teacher here. He's a Cornwall High School alum. Also to note, um, he was one of the top members of his class. Uh, so he definitely has a unique perspective when it came to class rank. Ms. Finn, uh, who is a current English teacher here, she's also a Cornwall High School alum and she's a junior class advisor. Another thing to note about Ms. Finn is she taught at Rye High School in Westchester where they did not have rank. So she had that perspective. And again, as junior class advisor to have the junior class perspective on it. We had Mr. Jacques Ponzo and Ms. Megan Chyla, who are both teachers here at CCHS, but they're also senior class advisors and SGO advisors. So again, providing that traditions and customs and senior, senior class events. So providing that perspective. And then we had Michael Kramer, who is a parent of a current 10th, 8th and 4th grade student. Just to kind of provide a wide perspective of, you know, kind of the future here. Uh, so what we're moving from is class rank to a Latin honors tiered system. So let me just get a brief overview of that. So what is the Latin honor system? Similar to what colleges have. Latin honor system is a way to recognize academic honors and graduates based upon grade point average tiers in a way that allows students to achieve recognition on their own individual accord, rather than a rank system where there's only a limited number of spots to be recognized. And in the last board presentation, um, I showed the data that showed the crowding at the top uh, and the fact that we get to the thousandth point of our system, you know, third decimal place where it makes the difference between, uh, you know, one or two, or even sometimes five spots for students. And why use the Latin honor system in place of class rank? Again, we briefly talked about the cutthroat nature, the SEL aspect of it. But our primary purpose in utilizing it is to be able to recognize more students who work hard and achieving their academic goals. It also decreases unnecessary competition between students, increases student intellectual and academic risk and creates an environment of support among students to increase their course rigor. So what are the tiers that our committee kind of came up with? There's no true one system out there that exists. If you looked at obviously college levels and what they have, they obviously have letter grades. We'd have to use a numeric equivalency, but what we did was we looked at a lot of different high schools out there that currently have the system. And we kind of came to a middle ground about where they kind of are. So what our three tiers would be, would be your 92 to 94.999. And as you can see, we're way out there in the, into the, uh, the thousandth place. With cum laude, that is with honor, uh, with a weighted cumulative GPA. Just I want to note that at the bottom, it's based upon weighted cumulative GPA. 95 to 97.999 would be your magna cum laude with great honor. And then anything within 98 plus or higher is summa cum laude, which is with the highest honor. So the rollout plan here is pretty simple, uh, pretty straightforward. Our class of 2021, which is our current senior class, will the students receive rank? Yes, they already have received their rank last year. We have always given it to them in their junior year for college planning purposes. So they already did receive it last year, uh, pre-COVID. Will top 10 students be recognized? That's, that is a tradition that we do have here. So we say yes for the class of 2021. This tradition will continue for them as they have received their rank. Will tiers be recognized at graduation? Yes. As a way to introduce this system and as a way to recognize the numerous, numerous high-performing students here. We will be recognizing the three tiers at graduation. So again, it's just a way to have a good entry point and again, and again, a way to recognize a lot of our hardworking students. For the class of 2022, our current junior class, will students receive rank? No. Normally, students could have received their class rank in sophomore year if they wanted, but in anticipation of this change, we did not give it out to this class. We will not give out class rank to them, uh, you know, this year as well. Top students, uh, top 10 students, will they be recognized? No. Instead of, uh, the recognition will be of summa cum laude graduates, which is obviously our highest level graduates are 98 or higher. We'll take the place of top 10 in the award ceremony. Again, if we, when the last board meeting, um, I showed traditionally speaking, it, it does place around 10 students anyway. We have had in the past couple of years, a higher number spike. Uh, it's due to various reasons, but again, in starting my board presentation meetings that I've had previous, again, we have a good problem here at Cornwall. We have high-performing students. So it is a good problem and I'm not moving in my chair, so my lights go off, so I apologize. Um, and then will tiers be recognized at graduation for this junior class to be seniors next year? Yes, starting with this class non, the Latin honor system will be used to recognize our high-performing students. Uh, a website was created. Um, it can be found on the student services page. Again, we could put it kind of anywhere that we feel would be easy to find, but it's on the high school student services page. It's an introduction of the Latin honor system and it's basically a frequently asked question. So again, some of the frequent questions that I had at the last board meeting was, will there still be a valedictorian and salutatorian? The answer is yes. We're still using the tier system as a way to recognize and to make sure that there's not, uh, again, a crowding at the top, uh, limiting of spots. But we still recognize and respect the tradition of valedictorian and salutatorian. So that is something we will definitely keep. People ask a lot about scholarships, about college admissions. Again, all of those answers in the frequently asked questions, because we have done our due diligence, we have done our research, uh, is on that website. So I would, uh, you know, ask everybody if they would like, you know, to go to that section to get all that information that they can. And if they still have further questions, they can always ask. But again, we've, uh, we've asked a lot of high schools that have either been through the process, in the process of it, or have been doing it for a long time. And we already kind of know what the ins and outs are in terms of what some of the growing pains they went through and also some of like, you know, the benefits that they've had. So right now I'll just allow, you know, anytime, any specific questions that anybody might have. Just because like I said, I just wanted to provide a brief overview. So I'm just going to stop.
And Mr. DeBolt, I just want to also know um, in several juniors, so they had, yeah, just so I know a natural question is going to be, you know, do the kids have a say in this? And certainly they did. We had a lot of really good, um, diverse conversations, lots of great feedback and brainstorming, which we were, you know, not surprised because our kids are amazing. Um, but I just wanted to share that because they were a key part to this as well.
Yeah, that's, I was going to just add that basically. So we did have student representatives from our junior class. Um, again, we had some great, great conversation. They brought up a lot of great points that we had to go back as a committee and then also just to do a little research. So for instance, I'll give you one example. They said, well, can you know your rank after it's been set? So they've already set valedictorian and salutatorian. It's the second half of my senior year. Hey, I'd like to know my rank. Can I know my rank? We called five different schools that are in process with, again, not having, you know, uh, rank at their schools. And, uh, you know, one of the directors that I spoke to kind of just said plain out, just as soon as you do that, you're right back to rank. So just do not do that and so on and so forth. They said, we tried that one year. We tried where we thought we could tell maybe the top, you know, uh, five kids. And then all that came down was number six, number seven, number eight through 28 and saying, I would like to know my rank too. So again, it's just the concept. And they said it usually takes a couple of years and once you don't know it, you don't know it. It just becomes a part of the culture. And it also becomes part of a more supportive environment. Uh, right now, the environment we have, you know, just one, if I can highlight just a statement from a student was, if I'm in a math class and I'm sitting next to a friend of mine and that friend of mine is number nine in the class and I'm number 10 and I want to be in that kind of single digit and he is struggling with a unit. I may not help that friend because I know that if by helping him, I'm hurting myself. Uh, so without that kind of pressure, um, you know, of that rank where it's that singular number. I think it just gets rid of that. I think instead it now brings people to say, come on, I know you got this. Let's do this. You know, me and you can be summa graduates together instead of, again, this cutthroat nature. And again, in talking to the admissions counselors, and I think that was the most important piece, I think that everybody wants to know. They always say, if you have it, we use it. If you don't have it, we have other means and we're very comfortable with it. More than half of the high schools in the country do not rank. So again, we're, we're kind of moving in the right direction, I think, with this. It's, it's the right thing for Cornwall, uh, specifically, uh, given the data that we see. And again, uh, just so everybody knows, um, Warwick, Washingtonville, Monroeberry, Goshen, I believe, has all been reaching out saying, what are you doing? Because we want to do it. And again, I told everybody before jokingly, but I'm competitive. I don't want to be second or anything like that. I want to be first. So again, I think, again, it's, it is just the right thing to do. And again, we've done our due diligence. So, um, you know, I think it's a really good move for our students overall.
Joe, were there any compelling reasons to stick with rank? I know you're sharing the reasons that we would move away from it or did they come from a particular voice within that group or from the, you know, the teachers or the parent or, you know, I'm just kind of curious with the other side of the argument.
No, I mean, again, the other sides of the argument usually was, and again, I, this is what I found to be kind of a disappointing statement sometimes, which someone says like, okay, is this like, kind of like giving everybody a trophy? And my argument to that would be ask any student who qualifies as a summa graduate if they are getting a participation trophy for earning a 98-plus GPA. So I mean, I think that was number one that stuck out to me. So and again, we're still affording that opportunity for that highest level of competition. You want to be number one, you, you go for it. You know what I mean? And absolutely, and that's something that we can definitely provide. I think what happened is that I think people start to lose sight. So I'll give you a prime example. We have top 10 here at Cornwall. Well, at Monroeberry, I believe they have top 50. And so it just becomes like, where, where does it kind of end? You know, because then someone can say, well, why aren't you recognized in the top 25? And then so on and so forth. But just to give everybody a little food for thought. Imagine having 100 grade point average and being called down to the guidance office and you're in your head saying, I'm going to be valedictorian or salutatorian. And you're told you're number 14. Because currently, right now, our junior class, we have 16 students with 100 GPA or higher. So again, when it comes to things like valedictorian, salutatorian, I always, my argument is always this, when it comes to rank is there's no such thing as the valedictorian, you know, automatic entry to college. Usually when you're in the top tier like that, you're applying to some pretty high-powered schools and they not, they deny valedictorians. And sometimes they might take number 17 from our class and the, and the question is why? And the reason why is because it's not just rank. It's the big picture. It's the holistic nature of the student. You know, it's not only your rank. It is, you know, what have you taken? What have you taken outside of school? Uh, what are your passions? What are you showing that can kind of fit at that campus? So rank has just been this very, very irrelevant factor that I think we've invested too much time in. Uh, I believe as a, as a school, I think kids sometimes when, again, because it's what they know. We're asking them to, for a return on investment for something that is in the single digits in terms of most importance with college admissions. Um, and I think we need to kind of reverse that trend and have them focus on, you know, taking a risk academically. Taking maybe like an advanced level course that they may not have taken, uh, you know, in higher level years, because that's what's going to help them more. I think we can support that environment here because we have a great educational environment. So.
Do I gather that there was no dissension about moving to the Latin system within the committee?
Within the committee, we had a great response from one of our junior members that kind of said, you know, what if I just want to know it? You know, what if I just want to know it? But I know you're doing the tiers, but what if I just want to know it? What if I just want to come down to guidance? And, you know, during our committee session, you know, uh, one of our parent members actually said, well, don't the kids kind of just talk about their GPA anyway? In the cafeteria? So can't you kind of figure it out? So like, kind of what's the difference? But at the same time, again, the point was made. Anybody that says, well, I just want to know it, but I won't tell anybody. You know, when I spoke to the school and I said, hey, did that ever exist and happen? They were like, we know, like, we didn't want to do that. So really, uh, the dissension really comes from, I believe, the, the people that seem to be in the single digits, uh, you know, up at the top. But I only think it's because of some of the customs or recognitions. We're not trying to take away recognitions. We're trying to say, you deserve the recognitions. But here's the thing, what, like, you know, I always say this, give me the, um, why does someone with a 99.99 deserve way more than someone with a 99.998? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, that's, that's the difference we're talking about right now. We're almost shutting out those students and saying, too bad, not good enough. Um, and I think that right now, um, because it's just a singular rank system, people are getting knocked out. They, you know, totally, absolutely, positively knocked out. So I, again, I think once we've explained to dissenting people, I believe them that, okay, got it. Um, again, the number one question is about admissions to college or scholarships. Once we explain how we have or we still can do, uh, provide that service if we did need to provide it. So service academies are a perfect example. West Point, Annapolis, all those places, they, they need rank. We still can provide rank behind the scenes in our data management system and send it off to that school. Therefore, no problems. Um, and again, I always, you know, I, I beg the question to, to parents if, if they've ever dissented on this is how are the 60% of schools in the country that don't rank, how are they getting their kids into school? How are they, their kids earning scholarships? How are those kids getting to service academies? And the answer is clear. Uh, it's because they use alternative methods, um, you know, that can support those.
So Joe, just to wrap this up and just to share some final thoughts, um, so the next steps will be, which is very exciting. So our current senior class, yes, they do know their rank, but we're going to start to celebrate based on whatever tier they're in at their upcoming graduation. So it'll be noted in the program. About getting specified cords for the different levels of, um, you know, cum, magna or sum. And then the incoming class, which again, as Joe was noting, I mean, the kids that we were working with, they're high-performing students and they could not have been more supportive of this, which is refreshing because these are the kids that, you know, they don't have to worry about this, you know? So, uh, it was really great to work with them. And so next year, um, it'll be the first official class that will be noted in this manner, but it'll be nice to kind of see a little bit difference at this upcoming graduation. Um, so, you know, we're excited. Thank you, Joe, for your leadership in this. This has kind of been his baby from, from walking into Cornwall. We're happy to get on that train. So, um, we're excited. I think it's going to be great for our kids.
Thank you, Joe, so much. I know we've, we have definitely been talking about this and so it is great to be at this point where we're moving it forward. So thank you so much and thank you for being with us this evening.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Can I, can I ask one question just as he leaves the room, so to speak? When those lights go off again, I mean. The, uh, the, the different tiers doesn't, won't affect the, um, the honor roll, right? The grades of the honor roll, that's not going to be the same thing. Those are still going to stay the 85 and, and everything like that. Okay?
Now, and again, uh, a lot of the schools we spoke to said, you know, sometimes we just had to relook at, you know, maybe our tiers or maybe, maybe national honor societies in line with one of the, you know, they did talk about that. They said, you know, it does kind of evolve a little bit. So it maybe has to mesh, but no, right now, this was a singular focus. Uh, we just wanted to focus on getting these tiers rolled out and, you know, like any plan and anything in life, uh, if you're obviously, you know, want to be good about things, you always reevaluate. You always examine it. You always see, hey, is it working? You know, can we make improvements? But I just think this is a vast improvement for Cornwall in general. So.
And Margaret, just as a reminder, grades and rank are two different things. The kids need to, they need to know their grades. That's they, you know, our kids are on school tool like nobody's business. They know their grades. So, you know, grades and rank are two different things. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Appreciate it.
Okay, Harvey, it is time for our budget presentation.
Thank you, Nancy. I'm going to share my screen for the presentation. Okay, can everybody see that? Okay. All right. So tonight begins the public presentation of the 2021-22 budget. And in doing so, we will be covering the next three months, going over a host of information, data, et cetera. All of which I hope is informative and is helpful to the board as we move forward to the April adoption that they will have to do. Tonight, what we're going to do is we're not going to dive into any big, specific numbers. There's a lot that goes on just before that and that's what's tonight's presentation is going to cover. I want to talk about the, the, the budget development process itself, um, how we start, how we get to where we want to be, who's involved. Then I want to touch on the needs assessment. As in any organization, we first have to identify what do we actually need? Where, where do we have to go to reach our goals? And then we have our budget parameters and variables. I talk about these every year. These are the factors that we know as of this point in time that are going to influence the budget. And then lastly, I want to just, uh, talk a little bit about the historical tax levy data. So, starting off with the development process, it's, it's really key to note that, um, as it has always been, it's extremely collaborative. We have, uh, input and discussion. We have input and discussions with every faction of the district, staff, administrators, chairs, as well as the community. And the community also has input and discussion with us during these very meetings. The budget process itself is not something that just takes place over two, three months at this time of the year. For us in the district, it is a continuous year-round endeavor. We are always looking at, at everything and how it relates to the budget. And I have here, you know, these are really the three questions that we're always asking ourselves, you know, where are we now? Does it improve student outcomes and achievements? And what do we need to get there? And when I say what do we need to get there, that's really the crux of where the budget helps us. Last point of, of reference, not every budget request results in an increase. The reallocation of resources, the reallocation of current funding is very much a part of the decision process. This gives you a, a kind of a pictorial of, of the process. At the very top on the right, we have all of the buildings and the departments. And there is an exchange of data that goes between them and central office, central administration. From there, we have multiple meetings, both individually and groups. We talk about not only the each building specific or department specific, but how it ties in with curriculum, technology, and really the district priorities as a whole. The central administration has their, their final review. We work up a proposed budget, which you will see starting next budget presentation. We do the presentations, the board weighs in heavily, has their input. And from that, we come to our end product, which is the adopted budget by the board. So next, I want to move to the needs assessment. The needs assessment is, is probably the very first thing that we do. It's part of the, the overall exchange of data with the departments, with the schools. And from each building and functional area, we look at what their needs are, what they're asking for. We review it, we analyze it, and we prioritize it. What I'm going to show you in the next few slides will show the cost of those needs as well. And it's important to note, as I indicate here, that the costs are what I call all-inclusive. It's not only the salary or the compensation, but it includes the benefits as well. So starting with the elementary schools, as an elementary level, the, the first need that they have first and foremost is a full-time computer teaching assistant. Currently, Willow Avenue and COH, the two smaller elementary schools, they share a computer teaching assistant, while Lee Road has a full-time position. Things have changed dramatically. No longer is there a need for just basic support, you know, to the teaching staff. We have integration of a tremendous amount of hardware and software. We have the technology in the computer labs to deal with. And we also have the, the ongoing one-on-one Chromebook initiative. So all of these, for all these reasons, this position is, is very much needed. And the cost, as you can see, is just short of fifty-four thousand dollars. Moving to the middle school, the first need is a full-time reading support teacher. For those students entering fifth and sixth grade, there is a growing need for those students to have what we call a focused evidence-based reading support. What this would give them is dedicated instruction to make sure and to bring them up to their grade reading level. Currently, this service is provided, but it's only to those special ed students who have it as part of their IEP. So again, this position would provide the dedicated intervention that would provide them at their, getting to their grade reading level. And the cost is about a hundred and eight thousand dollars. So this is a, that's a teaching position. The next position is a full-time teaching, I'm sorry, technology integration specialist. This is a teaching position. And at the middle school, they currently have one such position. However, that person's day is split between the mandated fifth grade STEAM instruction that takes place with working with the teachers. So the teachers are not getting the full benefit of this position on a one-on-one or, or instructional assistance basis. As you can see here, not only one-on-one Chrome initiative, but the new classroom technologies, the platforms, and the expectations by everybody and the requirements are just elevating the need for this. Again, it's, it's a one full-time equivalent, hundred and eight thousand. Next, we jump up to the middle school. The middle school has two key needs. The first is a social studies teacher, a full-time social studies teacher. Back in two thousand thirteen, due to budgetary constraints, this position was cut, one position. Since that time, we have not added that position back. And core sizes, core class sizes have steadily increased, currently ranging from twenty-five to thirty-two students. What's equally important is that the number of electives that the department is able to offer is extremely low. It only offers four electives over ten sections. So, you know, four, four electives, in addition to just the core, is, is not a, much of a robust elective course offering for the students. And again, that's, that's a one full-time equivalent at a hundred and eight thousand and change. The second need is a point-six physical education teacher. For some time now, our classes in phys ed have been high, from the high twenties to around thirty-five students. The, the key issue here is that it creates a supervision and safety concern. Unlike a classroom where the kids are in at desks in a seven-hundred, eight-hundred square foot room, the students can be all over the place in the gymnasium or outside in the fields or on the track. Additionally, with the number of PE teachers that we have, we are again limited by the number of electives that we can provide to students. So again, this would remedy those two situations. Moving to athletics, the following three items have been on the, on the needs list for, for a couple of years. The first one here is the assistant volley, assistant varsity volleyball coach. And volleyball is the only varsity team that does not have an assistant coach. As we've remade this for other teams, volleyball still remains the outlier. And again, this poses a safety and supervisory issue. The best example I can give you, you know, you can imagine if there's an away game and God forbid, one of the students gets hurt, if they have to go to the emergency room, well, the entire team is going to the emergency room and the entire team is waiting on the bus. There, there's, there's no alternative course with, with the current situation. The next need is the modified boys and girls lacrosse teams. We have a varsity and junior varsity lacrosse team. The key issue here is besides increasing the rigor on the field for having a modified team, what we're finding is that other communities have moved their, their, their programs to having a modified program. By doing so, they've reduced their community program. So all their community programs have been kind of diminished and shrunken, which creates a lack of competition for our community teams. So you may say, well, that's our community teams, it's not the school teams. Well, it is, it's, it's all the same. It's, it's the feeder team, it's, it's feeding into our varsity and JV. These students are not having the opportunity to play other students because the other communities do not have a robust community program. So what we're looking for here is to actually implement a modified program. This cost here of about forty-three thousand is all in with coaches, stipends, supplies, transportation, et cetera. And lastly, we have, we have a need here where we are currently getting a, a good amount of interest by girls to be on the, on the golf team, to have a separate girls' golf team. Right now, some of the girls that are doing this are practicing and able to participate with the boys, but they need their own team. And this cost of about ten thousand dollars would be a soup to nuts to provide them with that. Next, we're going to move to buildings and grounds. More of a support department, and that's really where the budget requests are focusing. Back in two thousand thirteen, much like the social studies position, there was a cut in one position to a custodial worker. And this impacted the middle school being cleaned at night to our standards. Is it being cleaned properly, adequately? Yes. But I would like to say that it's not to our standards, which are a little higher. Currently, we have four custodial workers that clean at night. It's important to note that we do have a day custodial crew at every building. But that crew is not a cleaning crew. They assist with the operations of the building during the course of the day. It's really just the night crew that has the opportunity to do the cleaning. We have the same situation here at the high school. We're looking for two custodial workers there. We have six custodial staff assigned right now, and they're cleaning about two hundred and seven thousand square feet. Lastly, there's a need for a full-time painter. Going back several years, you might recall that the board was able to support an initiative by us to migrate away from vendors and bring in our own tradespeople. And we've been extremely successful. We have our own licensed plumber, we have our own licensed electrician, we have HVAC mechanics now. It's going tremendous. This is someone who would add to that team. Currently, we have just short of five hundred thousand square feet of just interior space. Our buildings, interior-wise and exterior, consist of sheet rock, masonry, fiberglass, metal. It's, it's a big undertaking, and we're not able to get to it all. And we pretty much spend about twenty thousand dollars a year doing what we can in those needs. The cost of this is seventy-four thousand and change. This cost is actually net of the twenty thousand savings we would no longer need to incur each year. Now, something I want to show to you with respect to the custodial workers is information from a, a study and statistics issued by the Department of Education, the US Department of Education. I want to focus on level two and level three. There is five levels of what they call cleanliness or custodial effort. Number one, level one, as it indicates there, think of that in more of a hospital environment. We're not going to be able to achieve that. Level four and five is, quite frankly, it's substandard for us. We would never even, you know, get there or want to be there. Level two and level three are where is the sweet spot for us. And the key point here is, if you look at the number of square feet that a custodial worker can, can, can clean in an eight-hour shift, we're, we're slightly above that. Okay? Up in the top right-hand corner at the middle school, our cleaners are responsible for almost twenty-five thousand square feet. Okay? So that brings them, you know, somewhere around level three. The high school, it's up to about thirty-five thousand, much bigger building. Okay? So the objective here is to get to the standard that's level two. And level three is adequate, but we'd like to get to level two. And these moves would help us in that vein. This, again, this is not to say that the dirt, that the buildings are dirty, that they're not being cleaned. It's to say that it's just a barometer, it's a metric that speaks toward where we want to be. If you look down at the bottom as well, there's a note that these figures are based, are really estimates. Every building is different. It depends on variables, as they indicate there. The flooring, whether it's carpet, you know, vinyl, et cetera, floor coverings and windows alike. The last item for needs is, is more of a district-wide focus. And this is a one full-time music or strings teacher. There has been a tremendous growth in our musics program, specifically the strings program. What is needed is an additional one FTE teacher to handle the lessons and the ensemble time. Currently, we have two music teachers who are working an extra period every single day to, to help in this, but it's not enough. It's, it's not even close. And this doesn't even address the, the need or the desire to offer more rigorous music courses as well. So the current model that we have is, we have one high school music teacher who pushes down from the high school into one of the elementary schools. So that person does not only the high school, but they do one elementary school. And then we have an elementary teacher who supports two other, the two other elementary schools besides hers. So what would happen is this position would allow each instructional level, elementary, middle, and high school, to each have their own dedicated strings teacher. The cost there of ninety-seven thousand and change is actually net of the two, of the savings we have from the two extra periods that we're already paying. So all in, when you add up all of our district needs that I spoke about, it's, it's about eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Sounds like a lot of money relative to a seventy-five million dollar budget. It's not. We're not there. We, we don't have the funding right to second to, to say that we're, we're going to just pull the trigger. But the good news is, going back in time over the years when we've done this, this number has gradually come down. So that puts us in a good place. Next, I want to shift to the parameters and the variables for the factors that are affecting the budget or will affect the budget. The first one here is the property tax levy cap, often known as the tax cap. It's important to note, just as I, as I do every year, this cap is not a two percent cap. It was often talked about as such when it was unveiled years ago, but there is actually a formula that is used to calculate what the actual maximum amount that we as a school district can increase our tax levy. And for twenty, I'm sorry, for twenty-one, twenty-two, that amount, that percentage is two-point-seven-three percent, or just short of one-point-four million. Okay? Now, how do we get there? There's two, there's two big variables that play into that number. The first one there is what they call the tax-based growth factor. And what this represents is the amount of new construction, or be it new homes or additions that occur in our district. It does not reflect if somebody's house or someone's property got reassessed at a different number. This is, think of it as brick and mortar. Okay? So this number reflects the growth. And the growth here is a little bit more than a half a percent. Last year, it was a little bit more, but that's what we, that's what we're stuck with, that's what we have to deal with. The next number is what they call the tax levy growth factor. This is the actual consumer price index increase. And for this year, it's down quite a bit, down to one-point-two-three percent. Last year was one-point-eight-one. So again, these are two big variables that are playing into that two-point-seven-three. The next area is revenue. So as you know, the governor came out with his proposal and the executive budget shows the district receiving about four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Keep in mind, this is just the governor's proposal. As is the case every year, he has to come to terms with the legislature and jointly, they finalize the state budget. Where it will end up is anyone's guess this year. One of the big things to keep in mind that I'm laying, laying out and indicating down below is regardless of what you hear or regardless of what people are telling you, the, the, the education budget within the executive budget is down. The governor is cutting six hundred and seven million dollars out of the budget for us, for, for education. What's equally concerning is that back in December, New York State received federal funds as part of the coronavirus response relief supplemental appropriations. And what is occurring right now is the governor is using that money to fill his budget, his statewide budget gap. Okay? It's very concerning, and the way that he's doing it is, is laid out here. And, and I just want to go through this with you because it gives you an indication of, it, it's not games, it's just, it, it's, it's how they're, they're trying to, to bob and weave with their situation. to bob and weave with their situation and how it's going to impact us. There's a tremendous amount of smart people in this industry, and, you know, they're able to see through this and identify it and analyze it to see what's really happening here. So what's occurring is that, right now, every school district gets what's known as a STAR payment, okay? STAR is what you see in your taxes with respect to an adjustment. Your STAR exemption will vary depending on your district, depending on whether you're a senior citizen or not. If you look at the very bottom of my note there, the district currently receives about three million dollars in STAR reimbursement. Now, what the governor has done in the state aid budget runs, state aid runs, is he has implemented this local district funding adjustment. And what it has done is it has taken our STAR payment, and he has made an adjustment against it. So our STAR has been reduced down to zero. Okay, so he shows the STAR payment, and then he shows this adjustment. That adjustment is what he's using to help with his statewide budget. What is keeping us whole this year is the federal funds that the state received in December. So again, we got, he's putting STAR in our budget. He's taking it out, but he's backfilling it this year with this one-time federal aid. Everything's fine right now. But the problem is that moving forward, this is the mindset and this is the methodology that's going to be used. There's not going to be federal funding at this level every single year moving forward. So it's extremely concerning in the future as well as the current year. Now, much to what Brendan indicated earlier, this four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars is based on six million dollars of federal funds coming to the state. It is not a definite. Furthermore, as Brendan indicated, there is talk of wanting to get upwards of fifteen billion. Okay, so we're talking a tremendous amount of money, and there is absolutely no guarantee that this is going to come through. So the picture right now is very cloudy. We don't know where this is all going to come out. In the past, the biggest part of this problem on state aid focused at the state level. This year, it's a little different. We're talking about the state and the federal level. So certainly, I will keep you abreast of this as things change. Let's talk about the expenditure side. So the first item there is for twenty-one, twenty-two, the employer contribution rate, our contribution rate to the teachers' retirement system has increased from nine point five eight percent to nine point eight percent. Doesn't seem like a lot, but it is significant. It's about, it's resulting in about a hundred thousand dollar increase in the budget. I like to think of that as, that's one teacher we could afford. The next is the employees' retirement system. Again, this is the non-instructional staff. Their rate is going from fourteen point seven four to fifteen point six eight. A little bit higher of a jump. The payroll on this side is not as high, but nevertheless, it's resulting in about a fifty thousand dollar increase to our expenses. The next area, if there's one shining star here, that's good to see. Our health insurance premiums will be zero. There's no change, they are unchanged. The Orangeos to Health Plan is doing, is doing well, and there's no change. That's very good. The next item here is transportation. Transportation contract with West Point Tours this year is up. So pending a contract extension or getting a new contract, we will be looking at at least an increase of CPI. We don't know where that CPI is yet because the state requires us to use the May CPI increase. It's also important to know that even if CPI was zero, utilization is a key factor. If we have more children going to private schools, if we have more special ed kids going out of district, if we have new developments that are going to require more buses, utilization will increase. And conversely, if the opposite occurs, utilization will go down. The last item here is special ed tuition. Why this is a variable is because the annual reviews that are undertaken each year for each student start the beginning of the year, and they've run right through the budget season. Actually, some of them occurring right, you know, into June. So this is a moving target, it's very dynamic. And as things become a little bit more solidified, student by student, we will be able to modify what our costs are as we go through this budget cycle. The last area that I want to touch on is this view of our historical levy, tax levy data. I want to talk about the first column here. This is going back seven years. And the first column is the adopted tax levy. This is, when I say adopted, and this is what the Board of Ed has adopted. And if you look at the last seven years, the average is about one point nine seven percent. Now, if you look to the right of that, you'll see what the maximum allowable tax levy is. And that's on an average of two point two-three. The district, I think, has done a very good job with balancing the increase to the tax levy with the needs of the district. That balance is always delicate, we're always looking to minimize the impact on the taxpayer. Now, what's of, what's of particular interest here is the following. If you look at the tax increases on the right-hand side, it's very common for people to think, when we talk about the tax levy increase during the budget cycle, that, say it's going up two percent, they immediately think, well, my taxes are going up two percent. And that is, that is absolutely not true. It's actually never the case. But by the same token, I can't say that it's definitively going to be less or definitively going to be more. But it is clearly not going to be the actual amount of the tax levy. Now, I've broken this down by each of the three municipalities. And just to give you some indication here, Cornwall represents about seventy-five percent of our assessments. New Windsor is about twenty percent, and Woodbury is about five percent. Now, during seventeen, eighteen school year, you might recall that Cornwall had an assessment reval. And when that happens, it kind of recalibrates everything. So the increases there were not apples to apples. But what you can see here is that for the six years, it's dramatically different for each year. If you look at Cornwall for the current year, the tax levy went up one point three percent on the far left. But if you looked at a tax rate increase, it was, it was almost a zero increase. Okay? Woodbury, Woodbury, on the other hand, went up five point seven seven. And again, what's probably going through everyone's head is why is there such a disparity? And the reason for that is because of the equalization rates and the assessed values in each of those municipalities. It's a calculation, and those figures come to us from the state. We do not work them up. But I just thought that the board might appreciate this to just to get a glimpse of where we've been and what really the impact of the tax levy has had on the tax rates. In closing, I just want to mention that we have five more meetings, the last of which is when the board has to adopt in April. At the present time, these will be at Zooms, Zoom meetings. And the last comment is, if you look at the last line, you'll see that the location of the budget vote in the Board of Ed education election is really undetermined at this point. Point being, we have not received definitive clarification whether we will have an in-person or a remote or absentee ballot election and budget vote like we did last year. It is our hope that we have an in-person, but I think what we're probably going to see is some kind of a hybrid. So with that, I will open it up to any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Harvey, I'll jump in some really quick specifics. And first of all, great presentation, as always, when it comes to these things. So I actually have a few really granular things, just because I feel like if I don't ask them now, I'll forget them forever. So can we go back to the painting, painting slide for a second? So you said that there was twenty thousand dollars net savings. Oh, yeah, I'll wait till you're, okay, right here. So, so that's a twenty thousand dollar net saving. So if I can interpret this, so we're currently spending ninety-four thousand dollars roughly on painting services through various contractors?
No, 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 let me refrain, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Well, just to clarify, right now, we're spending about twenty thousand dollars a year. That's it.
Okay.
Now, if we had our paint, if we had a painter, we would not need to incur that twenty thousand, so it would be bringing the cost of this employee's salary down.
Got it, got it, got it, okay. All right, I, I didn't know if it was one or the other on that, okay, that makes sense. Another, another clarification, similar point was on the strings position. If you can kind of just flush, I was unsure if you mentioned something, and I guess it's that last line there, the cost noted for this position is net of the savings from the two extra periods per day that would not be needed. So is there, is there a dollar figure on what would be what we're currently spending? I'm trying to interpret that, is that, are you saying that the ninety-seven thousand isn't a true cost of ninety-seven? And if so, you know, if you can just kind of clarify those numbers?
So the cost, the cost of this strings teacher is the same as the other full-time positions on the other slides. It's about a hundred and eight thousand. We have these two teachers who are teaching an extra period in aggregate. That's costing us about eleven thousand dollars a year. Okay, so we would no longer need to incur that eleven thousand, but that eleven is already in the budget. So the true cost to implement this would be ninety-seven and change.
Got it. Okay, and so you mentioned the needs outlined as roughly, well, right there, eight hundred and seventy thousand. And maybe I missed this, but how much are we looking at for our year-over-year expenses? You kind of went through the line by line, but do we have a round number? You know, let's say we just did a flat budget, didn't add anything, how much, you know, how much are we going up in that case?
That, that will be the focus of the next meeting on the twenty-second.
That's, you're, it's a good cliffhanger. Really? Find out next week. Okay, yeah, I mean, otherwise, you know, I know we're going to be continuing to get more information, so that's all I had for today, thanks.
Harvey, I just, I want to point one thing out to everyone, and that is what the, the cost difference, I certainly hope we are allowed to have in-person voting with an option that if you wanted a mail-in ballot, that would be fine, but I think we've, we've done absentee ballots before as protocol. The cost to do the budget vote this year, the way we were mandated to do it, was so much higher and not in the budget. So I certainly hope that as we evolve closer to May, that we are allowed by the state and by the county health department to run our our budget and Board of Ed position votes in a more normal, normal way. So I just wanted to point that out to everybody, thank you.
And Nancy, just to add something to that, that was actually one of the things that we also brought up to Senator Skoufis, was just clarity around that and just needs for, requirements for Board of Ed candidates as well, you know, signatures and the like. So hopefully that will be coming soon.
You know, for, for the state to, and I understand why, but for them to, you know, not even say you have to have protocols in place and spacing and all the other thing for, for the budget vote, but yet, everything had to be absentee, and thank goodness for the way it was run by our district because we didn't run into the problem with things not getting printed because Harvey and his staff did things so ahead of time. But nothing was ever mentioned by the state how much this was going to cost us, and it certainly was a tremendous amount more than a regular vote, you know, would normally cost. So thank you for bringing that up, Brendan.
Nancy?
Yes.
I have a question for Harvey. I appreciate that the technology integration positions are there. I think as, as we increase our technology and the teachers' need of the support to do that, and the students need this support, I think that those are absolutely essential positions. My question is, however, if we are going to be ending up doing a one-to-one initiative, and which in just sheer numbers of pieces of equipment, do we have enough technical support to pull that off?
We believe we do. Shaun has been doing a tremendous job streamlining the department and, you know, making sure that what they have can support what we want to bring in.
Okay. Thank you.
Harvey, I was just wondering, in the second to last page of your, your presentation, and thank you, this has been very comprehensive and, you know, just a very, very well-done presentation. We talk about a point zero-three percent increase in the tax rate last year. Is that impacted by the fact that we dipped into some of our reserve funds last year? Is that more extraordinarily low because of that?
No. Here's, here's the ripple effect, so to speak. The adopted tax levy was one point three eight on the far left, okay? That is a result of pulling in more fund balance, that did occur, okay? So the ripple effect to the right, the actual increase, yes, it does minimize that. Okay, so if the tax levy was twice as much, those numbers would be twice as much.
That was an extraordinary use of funds.
I could, it's going to, it's going to impact us this year.
This year.
We'll be talking about it, you know, in further, you know, meetings.
Okay, that's my thought, thank you.
Harvey, quick question also. The painter you mentioned earlier, those services that we subcontract out, that's, that's RFP work, and that's, is that subject to prevailing wage?
It is. It is, and you're touching on something that's so, you know, I might be paying a painter seventy-five dollars an hour.
Yeah.
And that is why that model that we moved to, where we bring the tradespeople in, and we can get so much work done at, at a fraction of the price.
So in a wholesale fashion, the more work that we self-perform in that, in that unit, the more work we self-perform, the more money we're saving.
Yes.
Good to know.
And not only that, the more we can do.
You're stretching that dollar further.
Yeah, right.
Monroe, when I was on the board in MW, we started bringing all people in-house, electricians, plumbers, painters. We had a carpenter, we could do all of our own work. You know, at first you see the expenditure, but the savings was, was huge in the long run. It, it was huge, and it wasn't just the savings in the actual work, but in the time. Because you had the people right on board. And it was really amazing that the things that we were able to get done at the time in our buildings was, it was incredible, a great savings.
Okay, anybody else have any questions for Harvey?
Yeah, Nancy, John here.
Hi, John.
Harvey, a couple, couple of questions. Going back to the, the tax rate increase slide, I think you covered with Nina. Obviously, the, the great reset that we had in seventeen, eighteen caused a great deal of angst within the community, right? There were people that saw double-digit tax increases as a, as a result of, of that assessment not being done properly for a long period of time, right? Eventually, it caught up to people. Is there any way to try to, to normalize that period from a holistic community perspective? Because my sense is that there were some winners, i.e. some people benefited from a reduced tax rate, and other people actually unfortunately suffered from that tax. Is there any way to get a sense of what the actual tax rate increase was, community-wise?
Tried, and there's really nothing that, that we have, no information that's provided to us with respect to that. It's important to note that the, you know, obviously, the assessments, the assessed values, that whole process is outside of our realm. It's handled at the town and municipal level. We're just provided the numbers, and they, you know, essentially, here you go, this is what you have to use.
So. Right, exactly. No, my, exactly, I get that, but from a, from a community tax rate increase, right? Some of that is just rearranging where the money's coming from, I would have thought. Especially since the levy was at one point seven four percent.
Right.
Right, so. But you've tried, it sounds like, and you just.
It's very, yeah.
It, it's too, it's, it's too hard to do, given the, the time allotted.
Yeah, it's a big undertaking, and, and it's, it's difficult to get the necessary information that we would need.
Okay, all right, so let me move on to the next question, has to do with revenue. All right, so we're, we're hoping for a four hundred thousand dollar increase. Is that increased to what was in the governor's budget last year? Or is that increase a result, what he's going to pay us this year? Because we're still dealing with a, a shortfall, right, from, from the, from the state as it pertains?
Okay.
To how much money, revenue we're getting from them, right?
Right, so that four hundred and fifteen thousand is predicated on the governor or New York State getting the six billion, and it's an increase over the current year. Now, what I will tell you is that the current year, the twenty percent potential cut in state aid is, per the governor, is not going to happen. Okay, so we can, that, we can breathe a little sigh of relief there.
That's big news.
Yeah.
And is that coming from the state, or is that like federal dollars coming our way, much like the, the STAR?
No.
Treatment.
He, that's, he just, he came out directly and said, actually, his, his director of budget came out and, and said, we will, you know, I will tell you that some of the aid payments we've received were diminished by eighty, twenty percent, but they're going to make us whole, they've said. So there'll be no, no loss.
Okay. Well, this is good news.
Yes.
Okay, so moving on to needs assessment, working back. Buildings and grounds. I think your slide had a star. I got focused on the visual of the star. So I wasn't necessarily listening to what you said, but could you just clarify, are, are we at the level two point five, where that star kind of is in between level two and three? Or are we closer to three or two?
I think that we are a blend of two and three. I'm not saying it's in the middle, I'm saying that if you look at level two, as they indicate there, level two is a, is an, is an uppermost, as they call it, standard, and you can see they reserve it for restroom, special ed areas, you know, these are the areas that need a little bit more of a, of a, of a deep cleaning. I, we do what we need to do in those areas, restroom, special ed areas, et cetera. And with respect to the other areas, we do what we need to do at the level three. So it's a blend depending on the respective area.
Is it possible to, to, to drill down based on the, the actual facility or building? To see which ones may be at level two versus which ones may be at level three?
Well, you have that up in the top right. I mean, if you look at the middle school, based on the number of cleaners that we have right now, that's how much each cleaner is responsible for each night.
But we have, and I appreciate that, but we have, what, three other school buildings, right?
Right.
Are, are they level two, or level one, or level four?
But, no, good question. I don't have the, I don't have the number in front of me, but I could certainly get that, to, so you have more of a perspective of what each are relative to each other.
Thank you, Harvey.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions for Harvey?
Oh, one last question.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Nancy.
Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. So, so moving on, I'm working back on this presentation. Athletics. Modified lacrosse. And I'm sorry, I can't recall. Have we fully budgeted for boys and girls JV and varsity this year?
Yes, we have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Harvey.
Nancy?
Go ahead, Larry.
Question on the cleaners, this is all assuming they're not doing anything with COVID. Does, doesn't that now cut into that, into the time and what they have to do? I mean, it, it just adds an increase. Whatever happens in the next year or two, we're still going to be at a level where we're going to need to clean deeper and sanitize more. My opinion, as, as time goes on, I, I don't think these, that COVID is going to completely go away. So we're going to have to do some kind of sanitizing, even right now. You know, where we don't have the cleaners, the extra cleaners. How does that impact the, the night cleaning and, and so on?
It impacts it very much. Essentially, the, the individuals who are doing the cleaning at night are stepping up. They, you know, they're, they're working harder and, and doing more than that they've traditionally have done.
And something that was helpful for me, Larry, just as I got to sit down on all these conversations, extremely hard-working crew, and, you know, these guidelines aren't, there's nothing really precise about a level two, clear-cut level three. But something that was helpful for me is, we also have to remember that we have half the students, we don't have building usage the way we have in past years, so there's a give and take again.
Okay.
The hardest-working crew that you'll ever see, and there's some give as well in this COVID environment of less students, less building usage, not as many events on Saturdays and, and after-hours, all the way going until ten o'clock at night, so a lot of it is shifting priorities and making sure we're shifting to those COVID guidelines of high-touch areas and, and the like, where we're not necessarily buffing the gymnasium floor every, every other night as well.
Thank you for reminding me of that.
Yes.
Thank you, Terry. Okay.
Harvey, I'm sorry. Quick question. The equipment, and I don't want to get into details, but I'm just curious of the equipment that's used within the schools. The cleaning equipment, has, has, are these, I don't know, poor choice of words, like state-of-the-art, where these guys have the equipment that they can, they can cover large areas at a time? I know that they've really come up like with backpacks and all this kind of stuff. Is, is I'm not, is that we latest equipment so that all these areas can be can be cleaned and covered in the, in the least, because I know, I know it, it can increase the amount of square footage that can be cleaned in, by a tremendous amount.
Absolutely. So we have, we have what I'll call the Zambonis. Both the sit-downs and the walk-behinds, tremendous. We have certain machines that you, you wheel them into the bathrooms, and it's essentially like a power washer, and it sanitizes, cleans, and does everything you need to, and then the water just goes right down the drain. So to answer your question, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Sounded like you were, sounded like you were doing an infomercial for a second. It sanitizes, I was waiting for something to rhyme.
Okay, thank you all very much. So we're up to closing comments for the board. Nina, we're going to start with you, please.
Thank you for, first of all, to our counselors. I know Terry said that we were celebrating them last week, so, you know, particularly in the times that we're in, we, we need our counselors more and more, so thank you to all the members of the district that provide that support. I wanted to thank Joe and all the people that volunteered to be on the committee to work on moving from a ranking system into the Latin system. I know that there was a lot of thought and research and work done into that, and it was a very comprehensive presentation. Also to Harvey, Harvey, I'm hooked, I'll be back for the next sequel. It was, you know, a lot of good information and a lot of the foundation for what we're going to need going forward. So thank you, I appreciate that. I think, finally, I, I'd just like to say, I think for me, the the weightiest thing that we undertook this evening was, was the return to high-impact sports. I'd like to thank everybody for their thoughts. I'd particularly like to thank Margaret, you know, in terms of her background as, as an athlete, and, and, you know, the research and, and what she did in terms of, of bringing her thoughts here. I know we've seen letters from parents, and there's a lot of support for, for things to be normal. But, you know, and, and, and it is so important for our kids to be able to play sports, but, you know, right now, nothing is normal. So I, I think what I'd just like to say is, you know, we've relied on our health officials for, for the advice that we could move forward with this, but I just, you know, it, it was very weighty, and I just hope that everybody that participates goes forward and keeps that, you know, the weight of that decision and the conservatism, this would, this has to be approached in mind, and, you know, good luck to all the athletes, and, you know, fingers crossed that, that everybody stays safe and well.
Thank you, Margaret.
Yes, I'd like to ditto what everybody else said already. I, I too, really, I mean, I, I know that we're talking about the teachers a lot, and they're dealing with our students on a daily basis, but I also really want to shout out to the counselors who are there to help with the social, emotional elements that, you know, is, is one of the other layers of the teachers provided as well, but, you know, there, there's that, that additional layer that it's so nice to know that our counselors are, are working as hard as they are to provide that for the students, and so that once again, all of the students are feeling as if they are part of the entire community. And since I'm going with the Cs, I want to shout out to the custodians as well, just like the counselors are, are providing the social, emotional support, the custodians, and, and I, I know a couple of them. It's hard work, like when I, I was thinking about the, the square footage that, you know, each custodian cleans on a daily basis, and, and trying to calculate that into, well, my house is three thousand square feet, and if I, as a cleaner, had to clean six of my houses every single night, are you kidding me? I would forget it. So, you know, and the fact that this COVID disinfection work, they do that all by hand, that's not, you know, they're, they're, it's, it's an intensive labor-intensive thing, so it's a lot, and, and I, I appreciate, you know, all the work that they do as well. And Harvey, once again, thanks again for kicking off the fun budget season. I always take copious notes, because, I, I mean, I, the fact that you have all of this together and can, you know, just pull it in in such a way that it makes sense across the board is, is very, very helpful. Especially since I know there are so many different formulas that you have to use, and, and the fact that you even get any sleep at night, any night, is impressive. But I wanted to thank everybody for being patient with, I, I honestly, part of, part of the, the reason is, is we've had a lot of family members and friends who have been affected by COVID. And I, you know, if I could turn back time and when wish that these people that we lost were here again, you know, it, it's, that's kind of part of my, my angle as well, is, you know, to go back in time and be able to do anything that would reduce the risk. To have those people still with us is, is one of the main reasons that, excuse me, that I, you know, that I'm so passionate about this, and I really, really, really want to emphasize how important it is for everybody who is involved to really adhere to those standards and think of that every time, and that it's not just playing the sport, but it's keeping everybody else as safe as well at the same time, so. Thank you very much, everybody, have a good night.
Thank you, Margaret. John?
So Matt's not here tonight, so he's given me permission to use his copyrighted term ditto to everything that Margaret and Nina have already said. You know, when, when it comes to, to risk, risk is normally not something that you can avoid or pursue in and of itself. It's something that involves trade-offs, and we understand that the trade-off of the risk of the, the virus has a consequence on the downside as terms of the, the, the socio-development of our kids, and so I believe that we could take that risk, mitigate the risk of the virus, because others have done it. And if others have done it, I think we have the right team in place to do it successfully here. So, so my trust and confidence is with the, with Terry and his team to get it done, because I understand that our kids' health, their mental health, is so important during this time, and it's something that has, has demonstrated the importance of all these extracurricular things that the school district provides, whether it be arts or athletics and other extracurricular activities. It's, it's, it's so important, and I'm glad to see that we're starting to thaw a little bit, even though it's going to be colder, real cold, over the next couple of days, I guess. But I'm glad to see that we are strategizing on ways to, to, to help our kids deal with risk in a very informed, calculated, and safe manner, so hats off to Terry and the team on that. I want to thank Joe DeBolt, not only for his counselors and, and, and for overseeing their activities on a daily basis, but taking this very simple thing of class rank and putting it through the gauntlet of a three hundred and sixty stakeholder process. Hats off to it. I think he has demonstrated just the perfect way that change should come about. Great idea, discussed throughout a whole level of stakeholders, have a committee who are experts in their own areas, focusing on that, and then get to a point where everyone feels comfortable that this change not only is important to do, but can be done safely and to great effect for our kids. So hats off to, to Joe, Terry, Megan, for, for making that happen. It was long in the process. COVID obviously kind of interrupted things a little bit, but hats off for that major leap forward. Thank you for that. The last thing I want to, I want to talk about real quickly has to do with extracurriculars. We focused a lot at this meeting about athletics, but I heard Terry also talk about, especially with Brendan, talking about the importance of the three. I don't want our focus of just high risk to, to, to send the wrong message that we're not concerned about the risk in all the other activities, or the importance of engaging in those activities. So I just wanted to reemphasize that. Sometimes it gets lost based on what's on the agenda, because it wasn't on the agenda, but I know from Terry, talking to Terry and the team, that getting this extracurricular, whether it be athletics, arts, started, is important for the district, and starting it now is the right time, so thank you.
Thank you, John. Brendan?
Thanks, Nancy. Alright, so, yeah, I mean, I'll try to go quick through my checklist here. So first, to everybody, all of my fellow board members, I know that we, we had a weighty decision to make tonight, and I could tell, I think everybody was asking themselves very serious questions, and I, I trust that we all came to answers that, that we were comfortable with. A particular thanks to Margaret for your, your very clear moral courage tonight, and I think that your, your arguments were very well-taken, very well-received, and, you know, I, I think that we made, we all made, we all made the best decision that we could, and I, I know that it wasn't easy for anybody, so, so thank you all for that. I, I want to go back really quick, and I, I made a, a point last week, and I forgot, I forgot to mention something. I want to thank John for all of the, the leadership on the audit committee. I know this is kind of old news now, but he, that was, that was a process that would not have happened without his leadership, and we ended up saving the district money, both in the, the decision that was made, and then in the function that the, the firm provides, you know, and a great audit service moving forward, so this was an example of, you know, it could have, we could have gone through the, the whole process and come to the same decision, or, or stuck with the same firm, but because of the effort that he put into it, I, I think we found a, a better deal, and, and that was to John's great credit. So thank you, John, and I'm sorry for, for letting that slip last week. Uh, let's see, Joe, great presentation. Um, I think that, you know, we were thanking the counselors and one of the things with COVID, it's like it has affected everybody's job, but in different ways. And I think counselors, one of the things that's so intrinsic to what they do is like reading body language, right? And and that they can't even do, certainly not on the the regular basis that 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 they have in the past. So being able to find different ways of uh, anticipating kids' needs and then responding has been, I I know a a task for them and they've responded in kind. So uh, thank you, Joe, for everything that uh, you've done on that. And also for class rank, I mean, I know we're running long, so I'll just say class rank is stupid. Uh, it D and it it places the wrong incentives on things, you know. Life doesn't rank you, you know, the we we get judged on 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 the little things in between that you can't really, the intangibles, as they would say in sports. So uh, this aligns that more with with how people are going to be uh, judged in the real world, which is a good thing. And finally, Harvey, uh, you know, what can I say that hasn't been said? Thank you. I know we have more to come, so I'll uh, I'll strap in tight and get ready for the rest of budget season. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Brendan. Teresa?
I want to thank Mr. DeBolt. Um, this was my first experience with the new Latin system. And yes, I totally agree with it, especially given the tenths of a tenth of a percentage that can mark one student to another and really is is it's detrimental. It it's not, it doesn't inspire. And so I'm very glad to see that. Thank you very much, Harvey, for the beginning of what is the painful, painful process of budget for a school district that never ends. Um, I appreciate it. And uh, I think part of this evening, when when, well, first of all, I I've always been very comfortable that um, it's been the focus of this sport and certainly of Terry and the cabinet, that our students' health and welfare comes first. Um, and that has been never a doubt in my mind from the moment, well, honestly, before I ever came to the board, just by seeing the results of this community and and knowing what the school district can do. But it's been very clear to me and everything that I've received across emails and and conversations. And the same thing holds true, um, where I have some of these high higher risk sports. Um, I have, I have more faith and I'm more comfortable with it because I know that the stewardship of how it's going to move forward is going to be under the auspices of our superintendent and our school district, our board, our our cabinet, as opposed to, sorry, our governor. Um, which that would scare the heck out of me. So I am comfortable because it is so it's it's based in our school district and it's the control of people that know and care about our community specifically, not some great being sitting somewhere out in Neverland. And last but not least, I got my second shot today. So I I officially have, um, I have, I I I'm immortal. No, it's 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 really cool. I got my second shot this morning. I drove down to Manhattan and got it done. The age does have its benefits. So uh, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Teresa. Larry?
Well, for what it's worth, I can't get my shot until April fourteenth and I have to go to Binghamton.
Oh.
I don't know who you know, but
I'm at Plattsburgh, Larry. I'm going to Plattsburgh on April eighth.
Just got online with hospital for special surgery and just happened to hit it at the right moment before they ran out of appointments.
Yeah. Um, Harvey, obviously, thank you. I mean, you know, it's it's, we've done this together for a lot of years and every year I'm I'm appreciative of how make it unders last, at our last meeting, I had asked for an update on our rankings. Thank you. Uh, it was, it was perfect. It was uh, and I'm so glad that it's moving along and it's where it's at. It was a a pleasant, uh, not going to say surprise, but it was a pleasant surprise. So thank you. Over the past number of years, and it's not just the last couple, whatever the past number of years, we've always asked Walter and his crew to do more with less. And he's one of the first departments that we have reduced, whether it be personnel or equipment or supplies. And I think we've come to the point where we have to change that. Uh, it's, you know, you can only do that so often before it all falls apart. So I think we have to keep that in mind as we move forward. Talking about moving forward, I'm also looking forward to expanding the arts and the extracurriculars. Um, I'd love to find a way to be able to see our plays in person again. Uh, there's got to be a way that we can figure this one out. And and uh, the counselors, um, sometimes they get a bad rap and and I'm, it's too bad. I have seen this year, um, counselors helping a couple of my grandchildren that were in need. And they've been wonderful. They've been spot on and they've helped. So, you know, I want to thank you. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Louis?
Thank you, Nancy. Um, to jump on that custodial train, uh, Margaret, if you run that math out, uh, they're doing over three thousand square feet in a shift. You know, one person. I wouldn't want to clean my house. It's not three thousand square feet in a shift. I'm all, I'm all set. Um, uh, so I I'd like to share my happiness and my glee for the uh, second semester hybrid model. I think it's a fantastic leap forward. Um, and that and that kind of segues into thanking Sean and that techno, the technology team doing what they did to figure it out and to and to take those steps for us to get us there. I think that, I think it's wonderful. I think it's fantastic. It's uh, someone said, I believe Nina said early on about normal, like what is normal? What's our new normal? What is our old normal is old? Like, this is the next step of our normal perhaps, and I'm I'm hugely hugely thankful for those guys. And you can't, you can't not say thank you to the teachers for that because this is in one year, the next evolution in 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 their efforts and what they're doing. So they deserve also a little, a little thumbs up and kudos for jumping on this and being cooperative and 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 being supportive and again, taking that to that next level. So I do thank them for that. Um, the counselor appreciation week is such an important thing to recognize those folks uh, in this time specifically. The mental health uh, of our students is is critical. Um, I I tend to think our younger, our younger folks are real resilient, those young kids. You know, they they kind of bang back and forth and they 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 kind of slug through stuff. It's uh, personally, um, um, our middle and high schoolers, I I believe that uh, we need to keep that focus on. And so tho- tho- those folks, that team deserves, you know, major credit and uh, they deserve that appreciation weeks. I say thank you to them. Um, and Harvey and and Joe, thank you for the presentations. I'm so pro Latin, uh, after hearing, you know, some of the students comment and 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 I believe Josh spoke to it and uh, our student rep spoke to it also about uh, how cutthroat it could be in 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 the classroom. And, you know, it surprised me. And I'm very happy that we have high performing students. I'm very happy that we can evolve into another system that certainly recognizes them, but kind of mitigates that that cutthroatness um, amongst the, you know, the students. I think that's important. Um, and lastly, good luck to all our athletes uh, that that, you know, are get get ready to go out and play this, play the games, play the sports, play hard, represent Cornwall properly. Um, please be careful and safe, um, uh, to some degree or another. The success of that program and that the high risk and also non-risk, though the 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 success to that is in your hands, is in their hands and the and the coach's hands. So um, um, good luck to you guys and and I wish you the best of your seasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Louis. Um, Louis, I want to thank you for asking Harvey the prevailing wage question, because that's always very telling and um, I had forgotten about that and that's something that so many people don't realize is that municipalities and school districts fall into that. We have to pay what's called prevailing wage. And even though I've learned that it's scaled a little bit for each area, um, it still ends up costing us so much more to do ordinary work um, because of that regulation that the state has put on us. So thank you for asking that question about painters. Um, I'm, I want to, um, I'm very pleased that this board is supporting um, what our district wants to to do as far as moving forward with our athletes. Um, and so I certainly wish everybody the best of luck, the coaches, the students, um, and Cornwall will get it done and do it right. So thank you, thank you all for for doing this. Um, thank you to Joe DeBolt and his entire committee. Um, tremendous amount of efforts went into this and and it's good to see us moving along in that path. Um, thank you, Harvey. Here we go. It's it's good. Um, just take it step by step and and thank you to my board um, for all of your diligence and perseverance and to our our central admin. Thank you. You guys are the best. So um, and with that, I would like a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
The second?
Second.